All right, ladies and gentlemen, the date is October 7th, time is 7:15, and I will now call this public hearing regarding the annexation resolution 2024-46, which consists of 1.3189 acres of land at 4111 Twin Arch Road here in Mount Airy. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on the matter? All right.
I will point out that we did receive an email today from a citizen, so there is a comment that came through email, just to let everyone know.
Last call for any wishing to speak on the public hearing for the annexation. All right, hearing none, we will close this open meeting, open hearing, and we'll see you at 7:30. Thank you. The time is 7:30, the date is October 7, 2024, and I would now call this town council meeting for the town of Mount Airy to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Council Secretary Galetti for filling in on my absence last month. Did a great job, so I appreciate it. And we will move on to our presentations portion of the agenda, and I will send it off to Mayor Hushour.
Do you want to come up, council member? Councilmember Demoter is the liaison to the Streets and Roads Commission, and what we're doing tonight is honoring two families that came out and put together videos for our Safe Streets program, and we greatly appreciate it, and we thought we would recognize them tonight. You want to say a few words about the Safe Streets program?
Sure, very quickly. So we have a Safe Streets program initiative, and one of the centerpieces of that is we call it the Slow Down for Your Hometown Yard Sign Campaign. So it's a grassroots initiative where if citizens have a speeding issue or pedestrian safety issue in front of their house, in their neighborhood, on their street, they can participate, they get a yard sign, they place yard signs, and it shows their concern for their community and trying to educate everybody to slow down. And so we've been doing this now for three years, and the program has gained in popularity and participation each year. And this year, with our town staff, they had a very creative contest to encourage citizens to help promote the campaign, and that's what we're here to do this evening. So thank you.
All right, so first family I'll call up is the Downs family. Everyone can come up, that's fine. How are you all doing? We got, looks like we got a little bit of everybody. All brothers and sisters, I'm sure. All right, so if you were in the video, hold your hands up. There we go. Oh, good job. You guys are great. Okay, so we have a certificate of achievement from the town of Mount Airy to the Downs family. The town of Mount Airy hereby presents the certificate of achievement to the Downs family and commends you for your creativity in the production of the public service announcement for Slow Down for Your Hometown Safe Streets Driving Campaign. And that's signed by myself and all the council members. And who would like to receive this? Or would you like to grab it together? Okay, we'll let Madeline grab that. All right, and who wants to grab this gift card for $75 to the Mount Airy Inn? Who wants that? All right, and who wants to grab this gift bag that has really cool stuff in it, and we're all curious what all's in here? There's a fly swatter in there, and a cup. Yeah, so how about you grab that one? Can you get that? All right, very good. And if we can get the council up here, we'll do a group picture with y'all. And you got the camera? Thanks, Josh. Okay, we'll move this for now. Just pivot. We can leave the mic, I don't think that'll block us too much. All right, I'll just kind of speak from the side here. Can we have the Schroeder family come up? All right, you don't have to be too shy around us. All right, so who all was in this video? All right, and what are your names?
Matthew.
Lindsay. Matthew and Lindsay, you guys did a great video as well. And this is a certificate of achievement from the town of Mount Airy to the Schroeder family. The town of Mount Airy hereby presents the certificate of achievement to the Schroeder family and commends you for the creativity in the production of the public service announcement for our Slow Down for Your Hometown Safe Streets Driving Campaign. Again, signed by the mayor and the entire council. Okay, so who wants this part? And who wants the gift card? And who gets the bag? If you all don't mind, that'd be great.
All right. All right, thanks. All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have our public comment portion of the agenda. Does anyone out in the audience wish to speak?
I'd like to.
All right, if we can, we'll just limit to about three minutes or so.
Yeah, it'd be quick. Don't worry. My public speaking days are over. My name is Mark Moxer, I live in Mount Airy, 1104 Crown Street. I know you hear a lot of complaints, but I'm here to compliment you. The new rails, the trails that you did on the west side of town, it's wonderful. It's wonderful, I think you did a fantastic job on it, I love it. I walk it just about every day, I meet lots of people out there. That thing gets used a lot. Matter of fact, before I came here, my wife and I, in the evening, we just took a walk out and came back, and there was 23 people on it. A lot of the people live in town, some of them don't, some of them came, there was a couple from Damascus that I got to know, they come from Damascus. But I just wanted to thank you for that, and I hope, just to, I understand, I've heard that the Weemer family is interested in talking to the town about maybe finishing that through. And I would like, I'd like to throw in my weight to say, it would be nice to get that through, because it is a nice walk, it's a beautiful walk. I mean, I've walked it, but I had to go on Prospect Round and go the other way. But it would be nice to eventually get that through. I do know the Weemer family, and they did want to contact you. If you don't mind, I can give them your number, so that they can contact. Okay? Because they would, they would, they would be interested in it, too. I know they've been trying to build on it, and it just hasn't worked out. But that's all I want to say, is just thank you for the trail, it's wonderful, I appreciate it. And this one over here is nice, too, the new decking and everything is very nice. I've been walking a lot, and very enjoying, my wife does, and meet a lot of neighbors, a lot of different people from out of town. And the one thing that would be nice is to be able to walk right into town, right in here, and grab something to eat or something. So thank you, I appreciate it.
You could have more than three minutes if you want.
That's on me, it's. No, I'm up for reelection on the, yeah, you'll be sorry. No, I'm up for reelection on the election board, but Dick just hit me up for the Water and Sewer Committee, so I guess I'll be submitting. I do have free time now, because what tied me down is now away, so I'll probably submit for the Water Committee, too.
Okay, great. Look forward to working with you on that.
Right, too.
Anyone else wish to speak? Nope, all right, hearing none. We don't have anybody on speakers for tonight, so we'll move on to approval of council meeting minutes and closed meeting minutes. First up, September 9, 2024, the minutes from the Mount Airy Town Council meeting, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the September 9, 2024 Town Council Minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion at all? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes from the Mount Airy Town Council meeting from September 9, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, we have our September 2024 Closed Meeting Minutes, as allowed by 3-305, to consult with council for legal advice. Do we have a motion to approve the closed meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the closed meeting minutes from the Septem, yeah, the September 9 Town Council meeting.
All right, I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the September 2024 Closed Meeting Minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have our Civil Air Patrol report with Major Roth. Who are you, sir?
Good evening. See if I get this right this time. All right, this is our report for September 2024. Under mission and significant activities, the squadron participated in a wing-wide search and rescue exercises, exercise, along with members of two other squadrons that were attached to our team. The exercise was well timed, it was based on a hurricane scenario, and our teams conducted training for points of distribution support and lost personnel search and rescue. Right now, the wing in general is on standby to deploy to North Carolina to provide additional support to Hurricane Helene relief efforts, and our squadron members have been completing additional training and equipped themselves for that. An update as of today is that deployment probably will not happen, mainly because they're pretty saturated with help down there as it is, and the road situations are really preventing, actually, the distribution points from being set up, unfortunately. Under community support, the squadron completed our quarterly adopter cleanup along South Main Street, and our color guard supported the town's 9/11 memorial ceremony and led the Glen El High School homecoming parade. For qualification of achievements, we had one member complete all requirements for qualification as a small unmanned aircraft system or drone mission pilot, and another member complete all requirements for ground team member certification. Significant training, we also hosted emergency services training to prepare for that search and rescue exercise I mentioned earlier. We had members from four of the squadrons that also participated with us, with over 100 tasks being signed off collectively amongst the students. And our sober patriot team has completed a training round in preparation for the upcoming competition season. End of the budget year, so no flight time to report, and we had one new cadet join the squadron. Operational status, our ground team remains fully mission capable. We still have multiple individuals ready to support unmanned aerial system missions and mission base requirements, and we still have several members on standby for that potential deployment, as I mentioned, but they're basically standing down right now. On the horizon, a squadron is, well, we did, this was last weekend, we supported the Oktoberfest on Saturday, and a rocketry day at Wing, and we'll be having another rocketry day for cadets at our squadron this coming weekend. And we're planning a recruiting open house focused on bringing in more adult members into our squadron sometime in November, and we're still working the details on that. Depending on your questions, that's my report for the month.
Any questions?
I was just going to make a comment about deploying for North Carolina. I think, I think a lot of us in the town, we see you out there, you know, taking care of road closures and stuff like that, but it's, it's, it's important for everyone to remember that you actually have a function that is bigger than just about anything else, and that's the ability to deploy and help in, in a, in a crisis situation like that. So I appreciate you and your entire group for, for what you do.
Thank you.
I'm just going to second that, and thank you for all the things you did for the town last month, particularly the traffic control on Oktoberfest and all the other things. And just a quick question, I know you do planes and drones, do you also do helicopters and trainees?
We do not.
Okay, just.
We got two balloons out in New Mexico, but that's.
Okay, well, no, I was just saying, thank you, because they were asking, you know, the thing in North Carolina right now is a lot of helicopter pilots and trainees and stuff.
Right, and most, we actually do have air crews down there, just our ground team's not deployed, and they're mostly supporting aerial photography. So in a disaster situation, that's mostly what we provide, is a lot of that damage assessment photography that goes back into FEMA for further analysis.
Any further questions? All right, Major, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company report with Matt Hurt.
Good evening, everyone. Month of September, we had 216 calls, 139 in Carroll, 68 in Frederick, 8 in Harrod, and 1 Montgomery. Box 113, we had 29 EMS, 1 fire, 114 box, 7 EMS, box 111, 27 EMS, 2 fire, box 115, 13 EMS, and 4 fire, express care, we had 12 EMS. Don't forget, the 18th of October is our auxiliary bingo, doors open at 4:30, we start bingo, or dinner serves at 5:30. Bingo starts at 7 o'clock. Also, October 20th, prez, it's a ride, if you're not coaching, it's a hero's ride with the Patriot, Maryland Patriot Guard, where we stop at different fire stations across Frederick and Carroll County, as well as American Legion. So, and that's on Sunday, the 20th. So, that's all I got. Any questions for me?
What time and where do we meet?
On the 20th, at the Carnival Grounds. Registration starts at 9:00 to 9:45. They say kickstands up at 10 o'clock. So, it's a chance where you have, you go to different fire stations, you get full card, and then whoever's the highest score and the lowest score wins a couple dollars.
We play on Saturday, so I'll be there.
All right, excellent.
I want to give you a compliment for your, I think it was last Friday, October 4th, you had your.
Our open house.
Fire Safety Open House, and I went to that, and I went to all the stations, and I actually learned a lot of things. And one of the interesting things I'll share is, so I got to play with a fire extinguisher, and it has like a little laser beam on it, and you put out a, an electronic fire, so to speak. But I, but I learned that even a pretty large size extinguisher, you've got about 20 seconds.
That's it.
And so the lesson to me was, if you have anything other than just a really small fire, per your advice, call 911 and just get out of the house. So that was, that was surprising to me that you have that little of, you know, power in putting out a fire with those.
Did you do the stop, drop, and roll also?
I'm sorry?
Did you do the stop, drop, and roll?
I didn't do that, that wasn't an adult, that was a children's station, so I did not do that one.
Gotcha, very good.
But I also did, real quick, I did the CPR station, and again, they're always changing the guidance, and now if it's just you, it's.
Compressions.
It's like 100 compressions in so many minutes, where it used to be like 15 or 30, and then a couple breaths or something.
Staying alive, that's the key, staying alive, staying alive.
Anyway, thank you so much for that, it was very nice for the community.
Quick question on the hero ride on the 20th. So registration starts at 9, what's the cost?
$20, excuse me, $20 for the ride, or $30 if you have to bring somebody on the back. So, so you both have it, if you have two people riding, somebody's on the back.
Okay, I was.
And both participants get to play in the game.
Okay, and what's the total mileage around, kind of? I'm just figuring out if I need to.
I'm not a motorcycle rider, so I know the Maryland Patriot Guard, Frank, he handles all that for me. So, last report, I want to say 92 miles, I want to say. So it's a nice little ride.
If I start, I can do it with a full, full tank, okay?
There you go, absolutely. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just make a quick comment, Matt, about the tragic Red Shedman fire.
That's crazy.
We end up getting phone calls here at Town Hall, because there were houses in Sterling-Glen that were getting some brown water coming out. So for the citizens that are watching who can pass it along, if, you know, if you're getting brown water, just, you know, think about the fire company and, and that they may have had to draw a whole bunch of water out of an extinguisher.
At that particular time, that was the best access to get water for that big of a fire. So, we did try to get water from, excuse me, other ponds, but, you know, there's always ways of anomalies that happen, and you can't, you know. A couple of farmers got burnt up in the process as well.
Yeah, and believe me, it's not a complaint at all. We were just answering questions, but, yeah, my understanding is you have four counties worth of fire companies out there fighting that fire, so.
Absolutely.
It was a big one.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks so much, Matt. Next up, we have our Mount Airy Police Department report with Chief Ginever.
Good evening, everybody. So for calls for service for the Mount Airy Police Department, again, these are self-initiated calls that the officers generate themselves, along with the 911 calls, also 779. We had a very large increase from last year of September of 2023, from 626, again, to that 779. For deployment for K9 Paisley and Officer Reberts, we had four deployments resulting in four narcotic seizures and one handgun. The handgun that was recovered was from another agency, that's Hamstead, and the other resulting in deployment here for the Mount Airy Police Department. We do have some upcoming events. This Saturday is the wagon tails over at Watkins Park, I'll be there. It's a, it's a nice event for those that are animal lovers, and I know this town is really into all of that, utilizing the park, as a community member just shared here also earlier. That's from 11 to 2. October 13th, we have our upcoming for Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. The Mount Airy team, we're up to 36 members on the Mount Airy Police Department team, so I'm pretty, pretty proud of that, especially when there's 82 teams, and we got the biggest team so far. So, and for donations that Mount Airy has raised, and the team members in itself, for almost up to $4,000. So that's, that's huge. And again, I didn't bring a shirt with me, but I do have some shirts available. I know some other members have sponsored. Again, it goes towards a great cause, so thank you for those that have participated. And again, if you'd like to join the team, it's in there also, again, with the website to click on it. And if you don't join our team, there's plenty other events that you can help to participate. October 19th, we got the Fall Fest, Dan Hazrati and his team, it's over at the Carnival Grounds. And then again, October 20th, excuse me, 21st through the 28th is obviously our Mount Scary events throughout the town. I would like to address something that, again, seems sometimes a little disturbing, and it's continuous, I seem like a, sometimes a broken record here in itself, again, about addressing when events do take place, folks, call 911. We do not man the police station in itself. Again, people that are out there videoing, that's great, it could be helpful with the officers or anything that takes place for an accident or a crime or just something between some neighbors, it may be a civil dispute. Not two hours, a lot of the information that's being put out there, it's a little false and misleading to a lot of the community members here. And again, it just sparks a lot of controversy, saying that nobody sees the Mount Airy Police Department. If you always need an officer, find one at Walmart, and then there's not an officer at Walmart. So, I mean, it does seem like it's a double-edged sword, but again, call us. There was an event that took place at Walmart, and you folks may, may not have seen it, that event took place. The information was posted out there, but the Mount Airy Police Department didn't get a call for two hours later. And it sparked a lot of interest, saying, did you call the police, so on and so forth. So somebody videotaped something, and then it made its way through some other social platforms, and then finally got to the police department. The event already took place, and the person was gone. So there wasn't any impact that we can do. Is there a part of investigation? Sure, but maybe if somebody would have called sooner rather than videotaping it and find it, maybe a little funny to put that information out there. Again, things happen in this town, they're, they're very minor, but again, if you don't call us, it generates work for us, rather than putting it on social media and continuously between the communities, not sharing it with the police department, and then expecting the police department to do something about it. Well, sometimes it's a little too late in itself. Which brings me to another one, moving on from Walmart, is the Twin Ridge community. I know the past couple months that we've received a lot of complaints about speeders and stop signs, and with the raised pedestrian crosswalk. And continuously every month that we do an initiation for traffic based on the community complaints that we receive. So I did share this time in itself, I was a little hesitant at first, but I did put that in my, my packet here, is for the Twin Ridge community that during the month of September, out of 19 stops that the officers were involved with in the area, and that goes from Deer Hollow to Rising Ridge, Village Gate and Rising Ridge, Prospect and Rising Ridge, from stop signs to stops, stoplights, and speed enforcement. Out of the 19 stops, you have, just about half are your town residents that are committing the violations that you all called on, saying that it seems that it's through the development of Rising Ridge, the people that work there, or that transit, other transient traffic coming through. That, again, is false. It seems like for every other car that we're pulling over, it is a town resident that is making an accusation of somebody else that doesn't reside in this town, making a violation. Again, false information, it's the town residents. So again, supporting that Slow Down for Your Hometown, well, let's, let's put it to work, folks. I mean, you're calling for help on certain things, and then when these officers come out here, it's not like somebody's car goes fluorescent green for the violation, it says they live in another, another town or county or state, it's you folks here. So, I mean, we're out there addressing these complaints, but I just want everyone to be aware of, again, it's the town residents. We're turning into somewhat of our own little worst enemy when we make these complaints. So if we do have something, again, feed the information through Town Hall or the police department, and I will make sure myself and the other officers address these concerns. But again, the information statistically for these stops, the information doesn't lie. So, thank you. I don't have anything else, excuse me.
Yeah, just, and a follow-up, Chief, and again, thank you for all the, everything you guys do, and especially for supporting our speeding campaign. And, and I had talked with the chief, and at our Streets and Roads meeting, I had asked, you know, can we, in addition to breaking out the data the way we are, which is now we're saying, here's where the stops occurred and, and what they were stopped for, I wanted to see, okay, how many are in-town residents and out-of-town residents? And then after some thought about that, the chief broke that data out to, to show the point that he just showed, which is, you know, yes, we have transients, more so coming on Main Street, going through the town, but these are our own neighborhoods, this is where we all live, work, and play. And we just need to remind ourselves, you know, we, we love our town and the quality of life we have in our town, and we need to look out for each other and drive the speed limit for our fellow neighbors. So, it's, it's a good reminder of the picture of what's happening out there. So, thank you.
Sure, yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much, Chief.
All right, great, thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, we will move into our mayor, council, and staff reports. First up's the mayor's report with Mayor Hushour.
All right, first of all, I'll emphasize that this Sunday is the Making Strides event that begins at 9:00 a.m., and that's over in Watkins Park. And as the chief said, you could join his team or join Kiwanis, I see Kiwanian out here who I normally join. I think I'm going to walk with the chief this year, though. He came in and, and he hijacked me. Second of all, we all know what's going on, if you're watching the news down in North Carolina near Asheville, and our hearts go out to, to those citizens down there that are working their way through the Helene, that came through and absolutely decimated the whole area down there. But I wanted to point out that we do have citizens from town that are down there. We have members of the Rotary Club are down there. Rubicon, our Planning Commission chairman, is, I think he's down in Florida right now. Have you heard anything, Martina? So.
He's okay.
He's okay.
He's doing his job.
All right, all right, he's got another hurricane headed that way. And of course, the Civil Air Patrol has been on call, so we greatly appreciate the efforts and the things that we've done within our town. Third thing, a little bit of a lighter note, the Christmas decoration this year is based on the Rails to Trails patch. on the Rails to Trails patch, and that's all been designed and ordered. So within a month, those will be available for sale out at the Historical Society and probably here at Town Hall as well. So, so that's good. The Rails to Trails update for this year is that we are having a ribbon cutting on October 15th at 2:00 p.m. It'll be under the new archway, which is right over there on Hill Street. The town staff is trying to figure out how to get parking over on the cold storage property, Mark. And so, so if we have a phone number that could get us through to them, then it would certainly help because we're, we're, we're trying to go around somebody else. We keep getting somebody in the middle of our conversation. So if we could reach out to them, that would be great because we have several delegates, Senator, Representative, State Senators coming down. So a lot of people are showing up to that. It's going to be a big event. So, okay. That's Rails to Trails. Mount Scary is coming up. I'm just going to hold up the orange card. These are all over town. Nancy, you did a great job on these. It's a whole week of events going from October 19th, starting with a movie night, going all the way through October 26th with a spooky trail. We're haunting up the caboose again. There's storytime in the caboose, a contest, contest, Pets on Parade costume contest and a scavenger hunt. So whole week of festivities for that. Final note that I have in here is, kind of brings us back to a sad note, and that's the town mourns the passing of Hall of Fame member Bonnie Winkler, who passed away last week surrounded by her family. Bonnie was inducted into the Hall of Fame in 2009. She is a direct descendant of Mr. Henry Bussard, one of the founders of Mount Airy. Many persons in town know her as a very successful real estate agent, but behind the scenes, Bonnie was inactive, was active in St. James Church, where she helped to found and manage the nursery. She was also an employee at F and, F and M Bank and worked at her family's excavating company. For the town, Bonnie took on the role of overseeing Pine Grove Cemetery until a few years ago, and then Matt took over. Her motto throughout her real estate career was, "I don't charge God for his workings." She will be missed.
All right, next up, we have our Recreation and Parks Board, Beautification Commission and the Flatiron Task Force with Council Secretary Galetti.
Thank you. I'll start with beautification. They met on the 17th of September. Again, if anybody wants to volunteer, but they don't think they have a lot of time, this is a great commission. They're in here and out within 45 minutes. They're getting, it's interesting because they say, well, we don't do much. They do a lot all month long. They're just getting ready to plant some trees and shrubs and put the gardens to bed for the winter. That's pretty much my summary, because they're ordering things, they're replanting some Black Eyed Susans at the new archway, they're getting some native bushes and trees for the new archway, so they're going nonstop with what they're doing. The next meeting is October 15th, 7 o'clock, Town Hall. Parks and Rec met on the 19th, virtual. Rails to Trails East is still waiting for approval. I'm not sure what he means. These are bullet points, and I have to thank the person who took the notes for me.
They're waiting on MDE approval, and I think we have to wait for a particular season before we can do anything concerning paving or the bridge.
Okay, that's what they're talking about.
We need the money and the budget as well.
They did, they did talk about, because we had discussed it at our meeting, the cost of Rails to Trails, a $2 million project, $2 million project, and they said kudos to the town because less than 1% of town funds went towards that. And the staff has spread more dirt at Summit Ridge, the skate park repairs are complete, pump track rules are posted over in Watkins Park, and the Prospect Park pond is still in a designed phase. They did ask me to talk about this, and there's two things I want to point out because the mayor did. But I've had so many people ask me, is there a pet costume contest this year? It's, it is there, and there's also a human costume contest. So pick up one of these cards around town. So yes, everybody who's asked me, dress your pets up and show up at that. Their next meeting is October 17th, virtual. And then the Flatiron Task Force met on, was that September 16th? 16th, at the Flatiron Building. That was, that was fun and interesting. It was, I'm not going to keep repeating every time I talk about them because everybody knows it's a task force that's still going on. They came a couple years ago, over two years ago now, and they're still going strong. But updates on that is, the building was open again during the Oktoberfest on the 5th of October. Historical display boards, photographs, design concepts and handouts were available. Positive comments and responses, again, were received from visitors, and the event provided many with the opportunity to see and inspect the building for the first time, which is kind of neat when you meet somebody who's lived here for years and they're like, I've never been in this building. So that's, that's kind of nice. The town is encouraged to consider opening the building in a similar fashion from time to time or during future events, so Mount Airy residents can engage with this local historical building. And I do have an update, a new grant application for another $250,000 grant to Maryland DHCD Strategic Demolition Fund for the year 2025 has been applied for. Results pending. Efforts will continue to submit relevant grant applications as opportunities become available. And I do have to say thank you to the task force members because they're always talking about fundraising and ideas and everything. I think we've got the ghost tours, everything that goes through the Historical Society that's coming up. So pay attention and attend these things. The ghost tours, to me, was kind of eye-opening. There was a lot of murders in this town, and there's bodies everywhere. So if you don't know that, take that ghost tour because it's really eye-opening. So we're doing pretty good, I think, considering what used to happen. So the next meeting to be determined for the Flatiron, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Scary. Next, next up, we have the Planning Commission with Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the county planners, both planners were here for the meeting. Hannah from Carroll County told us about a housing, the housing study for Carroll County will be reviewed in October, and they are sending text amendments to the commissioners on October 17th regarding House Bill 538 and DRA. I'll keep you posted on anything that comes from these. I emailed her today to get some more information on it, but she didn't email back in time for this meeting. We met our Frederick County liaison, Ms. Vanessa Moreno. She had a lot of information for us. That's, most of it's pending, but she brought to our attention stuff that we should keep our eyes on that's close in proximity to Mount Airy on our borders. Cromwell Construction will begin soon. Cherry Run Road, which is 829 homes, is in the mix, and the developers required to include a school site before they approve it. And Potomac Edison is planning a 12-point, 12.7 mile improvement run from Mount Airy to Union Bridge, upgrading existing runs. There's also a letter of opposition that will be presented at the MPRP meeting on October 9th. I believe it's at Oakdale High School. Approval for new business, approval of proposed exterior modifications to the McDonald's building was approved with the conditions of cutoff lighting unanimously. No word yet on when the work will start. Some of the improvements are a third window for the carryout passing lane in the drive-thru and some other minor modifications outside. The inside will be renovated as well, and once this begins, McDonald's will be closed for roughly six weeks. S-22-0037, South Side Plaza Neurological Office, revised elevations were approved with the condition of bringing example, excuse me, examples of building exterior to the final concept approval to assure the color and scale are harmonious with surrounding buildings. S-22-0036, King Sports Construction LLC, approval of concept plan was postponed due to not having the fire and EMS certificate for the APFO sign-off. The Planning Commission is also concerned with the product and how it is processed for recycling and stored. We want to make sure this whole process and storage will not add to our current PFAS problem with the runoff from the materials they're recycling. Resolution 2024-05, regarding the introduction, discuss an impossible discussion and possible approval of the 2023 master plan, was approved although not unanimously. One major concern from some of the commissioners is the land use designation of Harrison LaShire, which led to the vote not being unanimous. Next step for the master plan is the joint workshop to discuss the document before approval denial. Tendinitate dates have been bounced around, but I think, John, we're landing on October 23rd at American Legion at 6:30. And our next PC meeting is Monday, October 28th at 7:30 right here at Town Hall. This concludes my September Planning Commission report.
Thank you. Next up, we have our Streets and Roads Commission and the EDC with Councilmember DeMoto.
All right, thank you. The EDC met on September 25th. The main topic of discussion was the draft 2023 master plan, specifically the business and economic growth components of the plan, as the Planning Commission was seeking our input on that. So we had some pretty good, robust discussions and offered thoughts about a proposed theme in the draft master plan centered around healthcare campuses and creation of, of healthcare campuses. And then on the other end of the spectrum, more individual healthcare practices and trying to promote more individual specialized practices. So there are a lot of mixed thoughts on this topic, and the EDC will be providing those comments onto the Planning Commission and then onto the Town Council, so we can factor that in as we review the document through the review process. Part of that discussion was also about small business growth and development and the challenges and lessons learned within our town. And I think the EDC is going to have some suggestions about how to make the town more small business friendly in terms of permitting and other areas of attracting small businesses. And for perspective, if you look at the 2020 Community Survey, the citizens said they wanted to continue commercial growth in existing commercial designated areas, and they wanted small businesses. They wanted boutique shops, restaurants, small shops. And so if that's what we want in this town, how do we attract and how do we make it easy to get those businesses here and up and running and off the ground? So we're going to have some thoughts on that. Our next meeting is planned for November 20th. Just make note, this has moved up a week due to the Thanksgiving holiday. Moving on to Streets and Roads, we met on September 24th. We discussed a range of streets and road safety issues brought up by our citizens. These included speeding and lack of complete vehicle stops at stop signs in the Rising Ridge Road, Twin Ridge area, and also speeding concerns on Prospect Road and speeding concerns in the Mary Dale community. We also looked at results of the latest speed studies and MAPD Traffic Safety Educational and Enforcement efforts. And then, as we heard earlier, and just to remind everybody, our fall, August through September, Slowdown for Your Hometown Safe Streets Yard Campaign has ended. The response was very strong, and it seems to keep growing every year. The first year we did this, we had about 45 signs requested. The second year, which was town-wide, we had over 70, and this year we had over 100 participants. So definitely a grassroots campaign with, with strong community engagement. Just to let everybody know, and we will do a better job communicating next time, but we got a lot of calls saying, my signs are gone. They're not in my yard anymore. So, so that was a service that we provided. If you wanted a sign, we brought a sign out to you, we put it in your yard, and then for your convenience, at the end of the campaign, we came and we picked them up. So that's what we did, and that's why your signs were removed. So thank you again for all that participation. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 19th here in Town Hall. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Recycling and Sanitation Commission and the Sustainability Commission with Councilmember Munder.
All right, thank you, Council President. The Sanitation Recycling Commission was held on Wednesday, September 18th at 7:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. It was a fairly standard meeting. We went over J&amp;J, comments and concerns. They need to just put a word out to J&amp;J. Please show up to the meetings every once in a while, so just so we make sure that everything's going okay with the trash contract and the pickups, and if you have any concerns and things on that nature. I would also like to announce that October 26th is National Drug Takeback Day. The town is not doing anything this year because there are a lot of sites around here that are already participating. So please keep an eye out at different pharmacies and other locations, doctors' offices and things of that nature, where to take your prescription drugs to. And also, when the police station is open, they do have a drop box out in front of the lobby to drop off your prescription medications or any other type of drugs there. No questions asked, just stop on in and drop it off. And I'd also like to report that Carroll County, I believe, this weekend or next weekend is having a hazardous waste takeback day for Carroll County residents up at their maintenance yard by, on Meadow Branch Road, I believe, up by the air, by the airport. Please check Carroll County's website for any information related to that. The next meeting for sanitation and recycling, we'll work it out with Councilmember DeMoto, but it's November 20th at 7:00 p.m. here in Town Hall, because it's, it's always the third Wednesday of the month. So we'll work it out. We'll see what happens. There was no sustainability meeting last month because that meets every other month. The next meeting is scheduled for this month, 10/16, 7:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. And we, both commissions are always looking for members. They're fairly easy commissions. You learn how things work around town and on various commissions. So if you're interested in serving on either the Sanitation Recycling Commission or the Sustainability, please call Town Hall and throw your name into the pot. And just one other quick thing, Council President, just a comment on the, as Councilman Evans said, this Wednesday, October 9th at 6:00 p.m. in Oakdale High School, is the Frederick County delegation or the Frederick County Commissioner meeting relating to the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project, AKA the power line is going through. So anyone can show up, do, do their comments and things of that nature there, speak your mind. They are seeking comments on it, and that begins at 6:00 p.m. at Oakdale High School. Please get there early for seating. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up's the Water and Sewer Commission and the Commission on Aging and Libability, or COAL, with me. The Water and Sewer meeting took place on Monday, October 2nd. Precipitation for September was one inch below normal, and the wastewater treatment plant flow was 88% of the port of entry. The Commission discussed MDE, who has proposed stormwater management regulation changes, which if enacted, will increase the cost to build, repair or renovate stormwater management ponds. So we'll keep an eye on that and see if it's enacted. The next meeting will take place at Town Hall on Wednesday, November 6, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. COAL will be meeting with the management team of the Senior Center here in Mount Airy on 11/13 to discuss how we can improve the community senior center and how we can bring Carroll and Frederick County together to partner with the town and COAL to get the best possible outcome for our rising senior population. Being in Mount Airy, we obviously have a hard time bringing both counties together, which has proven very difficult, but we're gonna, we're gonna bring them together one way or another. The members of COAL also reviewed a proposed master plan and gave their edits and recommendations, which has now been turned over to the council. And lastly, a proposed book club was discussed, and the Commission will be reaching out to the library to try and form a partnership to get the word out on the potential book club, so keep an eye out for that. The next meeting will be on November 13th, 2024, here at Town Hall at 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report. Next up, we have our Town Attorney Report with Mr. Tom McCarron.
I attended the Planning Commission meeting and assisted in drafting the master plan resolution. Also attended the Board of Appeals hearing on September 10th. And obviously, with respect, as I mentioned before, with respect to the annexation. If you have any provisions that you want in the annex, want to propose to be in the annexation agreement, please let me know. You can email me. And then ultimately, you know, they have to, the other side has to agree to them. Or, you know, if there are provisions we want that they won't agree to, obviously the annexation, they can withdraw the annexation. But anyway, let, let me know about that. And then the only other things I would report are the other matters on the agenda for closed session.
All right, thank you. We all have copies of the Town Administrator Report, Code Enforcement and the Zoning Administrator Report, with our zoning administrator and our... Administrator Report with our zoning administrator and our town administrator. Do you guys have anything to add?
Nothing to add for me.
Good to go. All right. We're now onto new business. First up will be a road closure, Monday, November 11th, from 10:45 AM to 12:15 PM for the VFW Post 10076 Veterans Day Ceremony at the plaza next to Town Hall. The road closure will be from Main Street between Center Street and Hood Street. Nancy, do you have anything to add to that at all?
No, we only needed a smaller area because the event's going to take place in the plaza next to Town Hall, and we invite all of you to attend. It should be really wonderful. The VFW has arranged for a firing squad. There's also going to be a flyover by an A-10 aircraft, so it should be pretty exciting. And there'll be speakers, and it's just a nice way to honor the men and women who have served in our military.
Okay. Thank you. I will make a motion to approve the road closure on Monday, November 11th, from 10:45 AM to 12:15 PM on Main Street between Center Street and Hood Street. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Let him go first.
Yeah, I'm going to go and sell it a little bit since it's, since they put in the road closure request. We met today with Colonel Palmer, who is the skipper, I'm a Navy guy, so they're all skippers. Chris Palmer, I'm sorry. We met with him today to talk about the A-10s flying over. About a year from now, the A-10s are going to be going away. So so we were able to get a request in, and he said they'd have one to four airplanes, depending on maintenance and weather, and they're going to fly from the south end of town, come right up Main Street on a 052 heading, and head up toward Wagner's, and then try to cut it over toward the middle school and head back to Martin State. But it should be really cool, so we got to pray for good weather and good airplanes. And he's going to be flying, flying the lead airplane, and he lives over in Brittany Manor. He's a local guy. So it should be really cool, so.
He's also a great football coach and a good defensive coordinator. And a good friend. Councilmember Munder?
No problem. Just two things for Nancy here. First off, can we change that from firing squad to a 21-gun salute, please? It's firing squads just don't seem right using it, especially if you want elected officials to show up. That's just not right. But second question here. Are you, are you dead set on closing Main Street at Hood Street, or would Paradise be better? I'm just thinking of, Lynn, Councilwoman Galetti might be better on this comment too for me, is if you go up Hood Street, where Hood dead ends at Hill, that's that really steep hill there. So I'm concerned that if we divert a lot of traffic there, that if someone's on a clutch, big truck, or something tries to navigate that hill at Hood and Hill, it would be not good. So can we close it up? Is closing it up like to Normal, Paradise, or something, or is?
We're definitely open to moving it to Paradise. The reason we had picked Hood was because that has less impact on the businesses and then the parking lot's still available. But I will refer to the chief. If he thinks Paradise would be better, we can definitely switch that.
I mean, it's not, I'm not saying you need to. I'm just saying that's the only thing I could see difficulty with closing and directing traffic down Hood to Hill.
So I'll address that, since I live up there and see everybody that doesn't pay attention to the notifications when Main Street's going to be closed.
Yeah.
I don't see an issue with what you're doing because if they get there and they see Hood, they can always take that right on the hotel, and there's another exit there. But I'm assuming there'll be enough notification with our sandwich boards that during this day, during the day, so it's not going to affect an evening rush hour, school bus time from the time you have, I think it'll be fine. Because as long as we get those sandwich boards, which they did a great job, by the way, notifying about Oktoberfest, it's going to be closed this brief period, I think it'll be okay. Because either they're going to go up to the top of Hood and bottom out and maybe pay attention next time, or they're going to cut over to Hotel. I mean, they've done that. It's not, it happens. Or Hotel's also an option, too, so they, it's not like they're stuck there.
Yeah.
So I think what you're doing, I think it's a great suggestion, but I think that short period of time, I think it'll be okay, and it's less impact. Because at Hood, now you've got people that can still get to the businesses down here.
Right, that was our thought process, but we're willing to push it to Paradise.
Yeah. You're going to mess up with the people that want to get down and get their breakfast sandwiches and their lunch.
Yeah, I'll just say, thank you.
That was a good suggestion, but I think it'll have minimal impact. I mean, the chief would know better, but I just see it all the time.
I just, I mean, it's not important to decide, and I just wanted to bring, bring that up and go, let you, let you all decide.
Right, I agree with Councilwoman Galetti in itself, and along with Nancy, again, that short period of timeframe. If we're going to have, if anything, two officers stationed on either end, so if we do see some sort of large apparatus, and especially if we needed emergency equipment to get through, we can hopefully divert that truck. That way, they don't have to make that turn. Because I agree, it's bottom, bottom out, and then pushing that traffic through another section. Again, that short window, I think we're going to be okay. And it's still early in the morning, so.
I'm fine. I just wanted to bring, bring it up. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. I agree. It's going to be pretty neat.
I can't take credit. I didn't plan any of that. I'm just here to relay the road closure, and I would like to thank the chief for always being willing to help us with all of our road closures and our events. We really appreciate the department, and we do appreciate all of you for supporting our events and for bringing up good points. Thank you, Councilmember Munder, and thank you, Councilmember Galetti. We appreciate it. Any other questions?
I'll say, I appreciate you kind of shortening that time, just so, we do close Main Street a lot, and it does impact businesses, it does impact parking. So the least we can impact the businesses while still having these great events, I think the better off we are. So thank you for being mindful of that.
Thanks. We are trying to limit our road closures, so little by little.
But they are great events, though, so it's, it's worth it. Any other questions or concerns? Cool. All right, we did have a motion, a second. Our discussion is concluded, so all in favor of a road closure on Monday, November 11th, from 10:45 AM to 12:15 PM on Main Street between Center Street and Hood Street, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have an ARPA project spreadsheet update, so I'll relinquish to our town engineer, Mr. Barney Quinn.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, sorry. So yeah, Katie put the spreadsheet together, but I could take it. So we're doing some updates, basically adding the one project for Rockwell and Bellevue at the bottom, project number 11, with, I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but the, yeah, but some of the, a couple of the projects, we had extra money that we just simply moved over to the lab upgrade for the waste treatment plant. Turns out, we don't need that much money for the lab upgrade. So we were thinking, without having to give this money back, we wanted to come up with another project. We did have a priority project where we have on Bellevue and Rockwell, a galvanized main, not a service line, but an actual main, that's a two-inch galvanized line. It was like the right size for, you know, to fill in the gap, to replace that. So we estimated about $350,000, $400,000 for that, and the contractor that worked on Prospect Road, we can do a change order to that, and that is, they confirmed that that amount would be about $353,000. So just to give you an idea of that. So this $293,000 that we have extra would go towards that, pay for about, you know, two-thirds, three-quarters of the project. So.
All right, any questions?
Okay.
Any questions? So do we have a motion to approve the ARPA project update with the Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main replacement?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the update to the ARPA for the Bellevue and Rockwell Avenue water main replacement.
All right, I'll second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving the ARPA project update for Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main replacement in the amount of $293,000, $257.35, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Barney, and Katie. Next up, recommendation for approval of the wastewater treatment plant lab upgrade or improvements. I will relinquish to Barney Quinn again.
So we looked into just replacing the furniture. The equipment is more or less up to date, except for the fume hood that's also included in this furniture update, but it's just cabinets, countertops, and the fume hood, more or less, that we, we bid out. And we did get three, four proposals. This is actually the best proposal, and they're on GSA, so we didn't give you a summary of the proposals, since we can do it through a GSA piggyback contract. So we recommend going with all business systems for the $51,635.97.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion for the approval of the budget amendment or for the upgrades to the wastewater treatment lab.
All right, I will second. Any discussion?
Just a comment. I think it was probably well over a year, a year and a half ago, when, when we were looking into making these improvements, and I went on a tour of the facility with Barney, and we went through the lab, and I saw the condition, and very early in my career, I spent a lot of time in laboratories and bench chemistry, and I can tell you, looking at the condition of the benchtop and the fume hood and the equipment in that lab, it is definitely due for an upgrade, so I fully support the expenditure. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of approving the motion for the wastewater treatment plant lab upgrade in the amount of $51,635.97, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Barney.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have to schedule a joint workshop with the Planning Commission to review and comment on the final draft 2023 master plan. This will be with the Town Council and the Planning Commission. I believe we are going to host at the American Legion. We backended this to kind of speed things up, and it looks like we have a date of Wednesday, October 23rd, at 6:30 PM. Okay. Okay, so doors will open at 6:00, and this will be basically the Town Council's opportunity to ask any questions, request revisions, and just discuss the 2023 draft master plan as a whole.
I'm not sure if they have an end time that we have to be out of there by, but I don't know if you want to make it 9:30 or 10 o'clock, or if we just want to wait and see how it goes.
We'll shoot, I would say we shoot for a 9:30 end time, and maybe we can try and keep our questions, you know, to get us out of there by 9:30. All right, any other questions or concerns about that?
No. Discussion, or?
I mean, it's, it's planned, so.
No, I, I, I support the scheduling. I just wanted to make some, give some thoughts about the workshop.
Okay, about how it's going to operate?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. So I've been, I attend most of the Planning Commission meetings, and I've attended many to most of the master plan workshops over the past many months. And I, I made this suggestion at, at a Planning Commission meeting, but I want to echo it here. I think it's very important in structuring the workshop that we provide adequate time for public input and comment, because we're going to have a conversation about the document and the potential zoning in the plan, and I think it's important that the citizens get a chance to listen to all that and then offer comments on what they heard and suggestions and give input. So I think public participation is a key part of the process, and it should be built in. The second thing is, and you might want to think ahead about, do we need one workshop? Might we need two workshops? This is a very dense document. It's got a lot of zoning in it. It's got a proposed zoning for the Harrison-Lessier property, which, which we may decide to annex. And really, just the conversation about Harrison-Lessier and the potential zonings and different zoning approaches, that's almost a mini charrette. That's almost, you need almost a separate, built-in conversation on the potential zonings and the potential impacts to the quality of life to Mount Airy if we annex it, either positive or negative, again, with time for public input. And I know for myself, you think back to the Beck property, and I had conceived the screening assessment approach, which, which the mayor supported, and so we kind of did a screening assessment of adequacy of public facilities on a pre-concept plan. Well, here we are, we're going to develop an annexation plan for like 240, 250 acres, and I know I'm going to be asking questions about, okay, if we have these three zones on Harrison-Lessier, what are the potential impacts of that zoning? What are the potential impacts of that kind of density, those kinds of roads, et cetera? So that's the kind of conversation that may likely come up either amongst us, or I would predict our citizens are going to have some of those questions. So we just need to make sure, I would just like to see heavy built-in public participation, and just think about how you want to structure the workshop to make it most effective, because you're going to be looking at this potential zoning. One of the big chapters, there's like, I don't know, 26 or 30 implementation strategies and goals. You're probably going to want to have a conversation around those. So that's, that's the point, is really think about how to structure it so you get out of it what you want to get out of it. And then my third point is, I think we need to over-communicate. I mean, we've all learned the lessons about how important a master plan is. Once your zoning is set in your master plan, that's, as I say, 90% of the ballgame, and most citizens don't understand, by the time you get to a concept plan for a development, 80% of what that's going to look like is baked in because the zoning allows that. So it's really important that we at least, we over-communicate to our public that we're having this workshop, they have a chance to come and learn about it, they have a chance to participate, and I'm going to just throw out a suggestion. Because we have no newspapers, certainly we have a website, but I'm going to suggest we, we mail out a postcard to everybody in town with, you know, something of this size or larger, you know, there are mailers, you've seen these mailers, where we, where we promote the workshop, and in plain English, explain what it is and why it's important to citizens. And that way, everybody will know about it and have the opportunity. They may not come, but at least we know we've over-communicated. So those are some of my thoughts and suggestions, and thank you for the time.
All right, we'll take that in consideration when, with dealing, talking with John and Ralph as well.
Quick question. I'm not sure exactly for the workshop, what level we'll get into it at the workshop, but I do at least request all the council members and even the Planning Commission members to come prepared for the workshop, and just try and look over, I know the Planning Commission's pretty well-versed in the master plan, but just try and, let's decide at the workshop if we can not quickly go over some of the chapters that are just, I want to say, like, the topography is not going to change much. Some of the basic chapters, the history, instead of spending, you know, 20 minutes on a chapter like that, if we just maybe list chapter one, or say that's the history of Mount, Mount Airy, do we have any changes? No, okay. No, no discussion, move on. So that way, we can get the easier chapters out, pass them back for approval to the Planning Commission, and then start focusing on some of the more in-depth topics.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can agree with that. Yeah, absolutely. John and Ralph put together a great summary in the books that we received that highlight some of the most important chapters that we will need to go over. Those will be key in this, in this review. And I do want to commend John, Ralph, the entire Planning Commission, Martina, our vice chair, and including Bill, who was the chair prior, for all the work that they did over the course of this entire process. It's something that I couldn't imagine undertaking, honestly, especially as a volunteer. So the work that you guys did, the communication, the way in which all the workshops happened, which every single workshop was open to the public, and there was plenty of opportunity for public input at every single chapter that was. input at every single chapter that was reviewed. So I want to make sure that that gets on record. I also want to make sure that it is understood that the amount of effort that Ralph Gant, along with his commission chair members, put in is second to none. So the fact that we're here and we're finally at this point in the process, thank you, John, thank you, Ralph. I, you know, not only is he a volunteer here, he's in Florida right now cleaning up from a hurricane. Martina, Bill, and the rest of the Planning Commission, I commend you guys. It takes a lot to volunteer and to put effort into probably what is the hardest commission in the municipality that we have. So thank you guys very much. I look forward to working with you and getting this put behind us for another 10 years or so.
Thank you.
So, you know, the, I think the input that came from the commissions was something that was new and was welcomed. I mean, they reached out to every single commission when it came to the plan. The fact that all the workshops were held in open session, where anybody and everybody could come and speak on just one chapter or two, was also asking for as much public input as you could get. So yes, we will have public comment during this workshop, but this workshop is specifically designed for the council to communicate with the Planning Commission. That is where the majority of the time will take place, but we will, because I always think public comment is needed in every open meeting, we will do that, but it will not be substantial. This is now our time to have these discussions. So, but, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to add one more thing, because as a member of Streets and Roads, before I was ever a council member, I remember coming to a workshop to represent the Streets and Roads, and we're talking over four years ago. So I have to say thank you very much, because I know you then repeatedly reached out to commissions. I know councilmen were Demoters as Streets and Roads liaison. So I reiterate what Council President said. You guys really went above and beyond. And I remember having post-COVID meetings in here where we all had masks on, and we came to represent. So it's always been open to the public. So I appreciate that. And this is, like Council President said, this has been going on for quite a few years. So thank you, guys, for all your hard work.
Council President, just a quick, a quick, it's a posting comment. So, so, and I'm assuming you're planning on doing this, but I want to, because I noticed it today. So currently, the master plan that's linked on the town's webpage is the September 12th version. Now that this version has been delivered formally to the council tonight, I would ask that you try and quickly post the October 7th version, which is the one we have, and the one that will be used at the workshop. So let's, let's make quick work out of getting the right document up there. That's my comment. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to throw in there, I can't be the only one who doesn't, doesn't come in here and explain that Ralph Gant puts together a great agenda for any workshop or charrette, or anything that we got going on. He does a terrific job. And I have complete faith in the Planning Commission to put together a very good event, getting the American Legion certainly has the room in there for the citizens to show up. I do agree with trying to get as many people as we can there. To what extent we go to that, you know, is debatable, but we're going to do everything that we can to get, get people out there. Because what I do agree with is that there are a lot of people who are upset about things that are in a master plan that was created in 2013, when Bill and I were out there running around. And I think Martina might have been involved in it as well. But it was, so I get it. This is the citizens' time to show up and, and start getting some input on this before it gets passed by the council. Thanks.
One quick thing I wanted to.
Yeah, okay. Just also on to public participation, do show up to workshop, email us, send your comments to us. Planning Commission, council, mayor. Also, if I'm understanding the process correct, this is a workshop. There will be public hearings once this workshop is after, before we vote, vote on it. So the public will have an opportunity to come in and voice their concerns and any potential changes with it. So we're just not moving it quickly. It's just a workshop, and then so we can move on to the public participation parts of it. So thank you, Council President.
All right. I do have one question. So the mass mailing is a monumental task. So is it, do we have a consensus of that's what the council wants? I'm going to be doing Facebook.
No, that'll be an executive decision, and I haven't made up my mind.
Well, I'll, well, as I know, it's up to the mayor, but just, I'll put my, I can talk to the mayor, I'll talk to the mayor, mayor about it, the concerns I have.
It's an executive, not a legislative decision, so we don't need.
And alternatives, try to get it out if the mass mailing doesn't, doesn't happen. Sorry.
So we don't need a motion or anything for the joint workshop. It's scheduled. We're good to go. Okay. So we'll move on to commission appointments and reappointments with Mayor Hushower.
All right, thank you. Council President, first reappointment is Dave, David Difonzo, reappointed to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Do we want to do these all together, or?
I'll do the next, the next four together. This one I'll separate out.
Okay. So Dave Difonzo to reappoint to the Water and Sewer Commission. I will make a motion to.
I'll second that.
Reappoint Dave Difonzo to the Water and Sewer Commission. It's been seconded very fast.
Let him finish, Lynn.
I'm trying to beat your record.
Do you have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of reappointing Dave Difonzo to the Water and Sewer Commission? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, David. Looking forward to still working with you.
All right, and next up, we have the Board of Elections needs to be reappointed for an election coming up in May of 2025. And I'm looking to appoint Bruce Walls, Mark Moxley, Richard Swanson, and Anne Marie Duckett as the alternate for the Board of Elections.
All right, I will make a motion to appoint, or to approve the appointment of Bruce Walls, Mark Moxley, Richard Swanson, and Anne Marie Duckett to the Board of Elections. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
And Mayor, just checking, they have willingly, sorry, Barney, I'm just joking. I'm fine with them.
We contacted all of them.
Okay. I'm fine with them. Thank you.
All right, hearing no further discussion. All in favor of appointing or reappointing Bruce Walls, Mark Moxley, Richard Swanson, and Anne Marie Duckett to the Board of Elections. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, next up, we're in our ordinances, ordinances and resolutions. First up, ordinance 2024-22, it's a budget amendment to remove $215,000 from the wastewater treatment plant lab upgrade. This is for introduction. I will make a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, that'll come back next month. Next up, ordinance 2024-23, budget amendment to add $85,000 for the Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main, water main replacement. This is for introduction. I will make a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, let's see that next month, too. All right, with no unfinished business, that will now, the council will move into a closed session after a roll call vote. At the conclusion of the closed session, the October town council meeting will be adjourned. We will roll call into closed session. Councilmember Evans?
Aye.
Councilmember Munder?
Aye.
Council Secretary Galetti?
Aye.
Councilmember Demoters?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. We will see everyone next month. Thank you.